And city hall staff documented storm damage over a two day period and they submitted reports to FEMA and emergency management of the county. As a result of their efforts, they were able to work with our county emergency management office who submitted information to the governor's office, who then submitted information to President Biden. And as a result, city of Lawrence residents were able to qualify for aid that is greatly needed on an individual basis to help out with the most basic supplies like refilling their refrigerators after all their food spoiled. The police department distributed 225 boxes of food and 75 toiletry kits to section eight residents across our city during power outages. Administrative staff coordinated meals for our first responders and city workers at The Ridge, and The Ridge also served as a FEMA assistance location and shelter in coordination with the Red Cross and DSS that provided vital support for residents whose homes were destroyed by the storm. I see former Mayor Brownlee here tonight with us, and I know The Ridge is one of her most important legacies in her town office, and so I want to thank her forward thinking and helping make sure that that building is a resource available to the city, which certainly did get some use out of it during the storm. The fire department responded to 72 calls during the storm, and crews continued working to clear debris and addressing damage. The police logged 593 overtime hours. Thankfully, we'll get help repaying that, so our city budget won't hit quite so hard with some FEMA assistance. City employees, including judicial staff, assisted with storm cleanup. Everybody went beyond their normal job roles to do what needed to be done to make sure the city of Lawrence was able to recover, get on the road to recover as quickly as possible. One thing I'm particularly proud of, an initiative from our municipal court, not only did they extend deadlines for people who were impacted by the storm, but they also offered, the court also offered community service options for those that pled guilty to nonviolent offenses like speeding to allow offenders to assist their neighbors in cleanup and pay their debt to society. We need their manpower and we need to define them. Administrative teams managed supply pickups, compiled departmental needs, and then I was meeting with them every morning so that I could then in turn provide that information to the county. By law, all emergency management happens through Lawrence County, not the city of Lawrence, and so in order for requests to be appropriately be submitted to FEMA, that I had to go through the county, but our team really pulled together to do what needed to be done, make sure that the county knew what we needed so that we could get back on I was humbled and honored to ask the city to come together on October 9th for a day of prayer and reflection and issue a proclamation calling for a day of prayer. I believe that in a situation like this, where so many have been affected by something so massive, so unexpected, we are reminded of just how small we are. And if that doesn't teach you humility, I don't know what does. But beyond that, we know it was hard, and it still is hard for many. So asking the Lord to provide us with an extra measure of patience and grace for each other seemed only appropriate, and the best way to do that, I believe, is through prayer. We also did that in the face of the storm that we knew was about to hit the state of Florida, and having just come through a historic storm ourselves, our hearts could only turn to our neighbors down in Florida. And I believe that humility and patience and compassion for others is the best way to pull together as a community, and I can't tell you how proud I am of the city of Lawrence for exhibiting all of that. I want to thank everybody who prayed and who continues to pray, and I'm happy to say that the city of Lawrence, though we are not out of the woods yet, that there is much more work to be done. We have been through a historic storm, and we are in as good a shape as I can possibly imagine us being in at this moment. That is just a few of the things that I have to report about the hurricane, but the work goes on. In terms of what I've been up to, I'll let you know that tomorrow at 9:40 a.m. at Jersey Mike's, there will be a ribbon cutting. We got a statement from Jersey Mike's that I want to share with you about why they're coming to Lawrence. They said, "This decision comes as part of our commitment to serving communities and supporting local economies. Lawrence is experiencing growth and development making in an ideal location for our franchise." We see that Lawrence, we see Lawrence as a place that offers immense potential for growth. Our choice has thus in Lawrence rooted in the strong sense of community and the welcoming spirit of its residents. We look forward to becoming an integral part of this dynamic area, supporting local initiatives and fostering connections with our customers. They've already done that because they helped see our planning commission yesterday, but I think what you heard from Jersey Mike's is just an echo of the kind of thing that we saw in the days following the storm, that we're a community that comes together when it matters. Since our last meeting, I was proud to serve as the keynote speaker for the South Carolina Federal Integration and Museums, who had their annual conference here in Lawrence. We spoke at the National Disability Awareness Month, where we brainstormed with our community partners about ways that we could take those who are living with intellectual and other disabilities and give them an opportunity to reach their full potential through employment and the sense of pride and self-worth that comes along with that really is invaluable. We took part in Ten at the Top Upstate Downtown Academy, where representatives from the 10 counties all across the upstate came to Lawrence to learn what we're doing well. I was asked to speak to them about COVID enforcement, land use and planning and economic development. The fact that Lawrence is seen as an example of what is right and what's going well, I hope makes everybody here on this council proud and everybody here in Lawrence proud. I was honored to be asked to represent Lawrence at the South Carolina Community Development Association. That was down in Columbia, actually, the week following the storm. I called them up and asked, "Is this thing still happening?" And it was, and so it was a bit of a disconnect, sort of seeing the difficulties that we're having at home and then driving to Columbia and speaking about things like historic preservation and economic development, but I can tell you that the rest of our state really is there for us. They asked about how Lawrence is doing, and they've been a tremendous support for Lawrence. This past July, I was also elected to serve on the Municipal Association of South Carolina's Board. The Municipal Association provides tremendous resources to South Carolina's 271 cities, and to be asked to serve on that board is an honor, but this past weekend, we engaged in a strategic planning session to set the course for Municipal Association for the next couple of years. And we focused on several key areas of importance for South Carolina cities, all of which affect Lawrence in one way or the other. We looked at issues of staff recruitment and retention and development. We looked at ways to fund projects and ways to help cities fund important projects in a post-ARCA, post-COVID environment. And I was pleased to serve on the subcommittee that discussed responsible growth and land use plan, and I think you'll see how that touches on our meeting tonight and what we're doing as a city. It is incredibly important that South Carolina cities and Lawrence don't get overrun by out of control development, that we take a responsible approach to growth. And I'm pleased to say that the steps that Lawrence has taken through its planning and the dates and reforms to our ordinances, which will soon be introduced to city council, mirror the best practices that the Municipal Association, I believe, will soon be implementing as a statewide policy for all of South Carolina cities. In addition to those meetings, I met with planning commission, or attended planning commission meetings, I should say, and city council. We held workshops to review initial drafts of our updated land use plan. Took a call from Clover, South Carolina, to help with a student who was interested in profiling Lawrence for her My Town project, things like that are always fun. We had additional meeting of our mayor's youth council, and we'll have the next one of those this coming week. We met with planning commission yesterday, and I heard some concerns from members of the public. They were there at planning commission, some of whom are here tonight, and I'd like to address some of those in a moment. We have continued to work on the land use and development ordinance. We're up to the fourth iteration, fourth draft of that document now, as well as the comprehensive plan. Assigned lease with Arnold's to begin their renovations and moving into the Capitol Theater. We expect them to be open by December. I spoke with Gary Durkey today, and he informed me that they've already ordered the booths, so we look forward to that. We're also looking at new recreational opportunities and facilities for residents. We've heard calls for things like pickleball and soccer and updates to our parks, and we've had some really exciting conversations about those things. And finally, a good beginning of the day, as a matter of fact, it's taken up, talking about Christmas. Christmas planning for the city starts a lot earlier than it does probably for most of your households, because it took quite a bit to put it on as a city, but I'm really proud of the work that our staff is doing to prepare for those celebrations. As I mentioned, I want to talk just a bit about some of the concerns I heard at planning commission yesterday and the business that we have for council tonight. Far from being out of control, Lawrence growth is steady and healthy. We have homes that, plans that have come before council and planning commission, and many of those have been considered, some of those have been approved, but one of the figures I heard yesterday at planning commission is that we have more than 1,000 new homes on the way in the city, and I'm afraid that's just simply not accurate. Just because a plan has been approved doesn't mean that that plan is going to be implemented or has been implemented. For a variety of reasons, a plan may get approved on the city side, and then there may be difficulties with financing the project, or they may have difficulty with some other aspect of the infrastructure that needs to be installed. There's all sorts of reasons why a plan, simply because it's approved, may not ever come to fruition, but the plans that have come across the desks of planning commission and city council, first of all, are healthy for a city of our size, and not all of them will actually take place. I hope that's something that concerned citizens understand and appreciate. With that said, as the city grows, as we prepare for new growth, I believe city council, and I know my administration, has taken a very serious view of our need to balance the need for healthy growth, not growth for growth's sake, but healthy growth, with the need to preserve the character of our city. That is of vital and utmost importance. But to do that, we have to be able to define what the character of our city is. What are the things that makes it special? And then how do we protect those things? Unfortunately, that requires an update to the tools that city council has to make those protections, but until an ordinance is passed and approved by city council, we're stuck with the tools that we've got. That means, in practical reality, a 1984 subdivision ordinance and a 1995 land use ordinance. And we've learned a lot in the past 40 years about good planning and bad planning. Unfortunately, our current ordinance just doesn't reflect that. And so as a result, city council took the measure to adopt an ordinance, putting in place a planning assessment period in which suspension of, there was a suspension of new approvals for new subdivisions and developments, because we believe, just quite frankly, that our ordinance is a recipe for all the things that Lawrence is looking to try to avoid. So the key thing is moving forward, getting an ordinance introduced as quickly as possible, and we hope to have that prepared and ready for city council on first reading in November. With that being said, the matter before city council on the agenda tonight is a plan that was submitted to the city prior to that planning assessment period being put in place, and pending litigation against the city as a result of that. And so it was exempted from the planning assessment period suspension, and it comes before us tonight because we now must consider it, and we must consider it using the laws which are in place now, which is that ordinance from 1984 and 1995. All sorts of people here on the city council and gathering, and they have all sorts of opinions and personal feelings about the merits of what a great plan this may be, or may have concerns about it. But I want to stress to city council what is important tonight is that we follow the law, that we follow the law, no matter what our opinions may be or our personal feelings, we have an obligation to follow the law. And I believe that if plan meets the requirements of the law, whatever the law on books is, then we must follow the law. It's hard work that we do here, and I want to applaud members of city council for working together to try to update Lawrence laws so that, so that we can be the best that we can be, so that we can preserve the best of what we are. I thank members of the community for their concern for our future, for their passion for protecting the things that make Lawrence special. I appreciate everyone who has exercised and will exercise their democratic rights in speaking to leadership and letting us know how they feel. It's important for us, important thing for us to be responsive to the public. And I thank everyone for their understanding of the difficult position that city council can sometimes be put in when there are differences between the way we feel and the law that we must adhere to. I hope that all here will consider the matters that come before us with an open mind and clear desire to do what is right and fair and according to the law. And with that, I conclude my remarks, and we begin with the rest of the meeting agenda, which takes us to the public participation comment period. My understanding is that there are two individuals who have spoken, or expressed desire to speak, and so pardon, I call them first.
I assume everybody knows the area of land we're talking about. Do I need to let the other people know about that?
Mr. Parker, I think we're aware based on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Well, the two neighborhoods that are very close to the proposed subdivision. I live in Westgate, Jeff and Rob live across in Doublebrook, and we're concerned about it, we're not against growth, we are for growth, we are happy to be part of Lawrence County. We had very little time, less than 25 hours, most of the people that came to the meeting yesterday even knew that the meeting was happening yesterday. Gave us little to no time to ask to look at a plat, to know how many entrances and exits there would be, to know how many houses there were, to know if the houses would face our stagecoach or the back would hit stagecoach. Plus, the acoustics on third floor in the city hall are not very good. We even asked one of the contractors to come up a little bit closer, and even after that, we were not able to hear very well. We asked a question about the buffer zone of 25 feet, and the plat was rolling up in scroll, and he and the, Mr. Powell, Mr. Powell, looked at it. We didn't get a chance to look at it. I thought, gosh, it'd be nice if we had a table over here, roll it out, maybe even let us look at it before the meeting started, but that didn't happen. Now, I must admit that when I went down to sign up to speak today, Mr. Powell was there, he asked if I had any questions, and he was very good at explaining what was going on. We found out that one of the big questions we had about a buffer zone behind the houses was 25 feet, and I felt better about that. So it's not that we're negative, it's just about, I don't know if we're supposed to be aware that they were having that meeting, if it was in a place in the paper that I didn't read, but it seemed like there should be some way to let the people that are close to an involved subdivision to know ahead of time, hey, you guys, there's a meeting coming up, so we'll know in advance. That's, that's not happening here, but in the future, I just think communications could be better. The main thing that sort of bothers me about this is the traffic that'll be on Stagecoach Road. If you have 173 houses, can't wiggle your nose and do that, it'll take a while, but if half of those people come out Stagecoach Road and half of those people come out 76, that more than doubles the number of cars going in and out of Stagecoach Road every day. It's a busy road. I can see it from my bedroom, the lights going past there, and it doesn't slow down until nine, 10 o'clock at night. Of course, school coming and going, but after 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon, that's not the end of school. They have athletics, they have other events. I know that they end up being late after dark. You can, you can see the lights and you can hear the loud radios going by, so you know those teenagers are going home or whatever.
Dr. Parker, I hate to interrupt you, but I have to keep you to time, just in second fairness, so.
Okay, okay, I'll finish up. Okay. The other thing is there are 18 wheelers that zip by there, and the speed limit is not observed there very well. So the main thing is just the traffic, and not that we don't want things to improve and expand, but I think it's just a worry that maybe it's going to be y'all's problems more than the contractor's problem in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And I apologize for calling you Mr. Parker previously. All right, our next speaker is Jeff Thompson.
Okay, I will try not to duplicate any comments that Dr. Parker said. Dr. Parker said, "We were at the planning commission meeting yesterday. I'm Jeff Thompson, I live in Doublebrook. I'm here to represent some of those houses that are there." I mentioned to somebody about 10 years ago that Greenville County would run Lawrence County over if we didn't do something about it, and so that is starting to happen now. And I think since COVID, we've definitely have seen some uptick in subdivisions and people looking at Lawrence that we never had seen before, which where we are today. If you've been to Woodruff and you've seen where the battery plant is located at, if we, if we don't make some changes, then we're going to look a lot like that. And I know y'all are working on that, but it would've been nice if that had happened a little sooner in the process. A lot of people in Lawrence would say, "If you clear cut a piece of property and you put houses 20 or 30 feet from each other, that's not the progress that we would like." If we wanted to look like that, we would live in Greenville, not in Lawrence. We sacrifice some of the amenities that they have in Greenville to live in Lawrence, because we're not staring at a neighbor five or 10 feet from us. So Dr. Parker has already mentioned the traffic study. We are concerned about the traffic on Stagecoach Road that's already very busy now. I think there is a tree ordinance already in place that was, that I think for the larger trees. I am curious, have any of those trees been marked on the property yet? And then we've already talked about the boundary. I'd like to see the 25 foot boundary increased to a little bit larger than that. I also would like for the boundary to be deeded, that a future HOA of that subdivision could not clear cut that boundary 10 or 15 years from now, to be deeded. I know they mentioned something about that yesterday, just wanted to make that point. And so really to wrap it all up, protect the investment that people have already made in Lawrence, not so much what some future person is coming in to Lawrence to say they're going to do, because a lot of people have already made some significant investments in Lawrence, and let's try to protect the houses that are already here. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, those are the only individuals that signed up to speak during the public participation comment period, so that takes us on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains two items, approval for tonight's agenda and approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of September 17th. Do I hear any motions concerning consent agenda?
I'll make a motion if we approve the consent agenda.
Second motion.
We have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of consent agenda, please indicate standing aye. Any votes no? And consent agenda items are approved. The first order of all business that comes before us tonight is ordinance 9-24-2 and eight supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of City of Lawrence, South Carolina Combined Utility System Revenue Bond. This ordinance comes before us as a result of certain improvements the Commission of Public Works have made to provide for the growth that's taking place in Lawrence and make sure our utility system keeps up with demands now and in the future. See, Lawrence must approve all debt taken by the Commission of Public Works, and so this is back to the public city council. With that, do I hear any motions concerning ordinance 9-24-2? With that, do I hear any motions concerning ordinance nine dash twenty-four dash two?
I make the motion that we accept ordinance nine four twenty-four dash two.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Campbell, is there any discussion? Saving out for future matters, I say. With that, I will call a question, all those in favor, by passage of ordinance nine dash twenty-four dash two, on second reading, please indicate saying aye. Any votes no? And this is approved unanimously. At this time, the next item on the agenda is an executive session to receive legal advice regarding best solution of pending claim. At this time, I would entertain the motion to enter executive session, excuse all those present at the gallery, and enter public session again upon call this year. Thank you for answering the question. We entered into executive session. We have a motion by Councilwoman Miller and a second just under the mark, Councilwoman Lott. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of entering executive session, please indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes no? All right, we're going to take just a moment to allow our guests to step out. Thank you for being present here with us tonight. You're welcome to stick around till we finish.